I think everyone is here now, so we will open the special meeting of the Lake Lure Town Council Wednesday, October the 28th. And call it order the meeting. There have been two requested changes on the agenda which we need to move to adopt and then any other that you wish to make. One is simply moving in order, the policy group discussion to A, and the access to public facilities and town meetings, discussion and decision to be in order to accommodate our very much appreciated guests for those. So is, do I hear a motion to approve those moves in the changes in the agenda and are there any others?
I make that a motion, that motion that we've changed those suggested changes.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
The agenda stands adopted as amended. We will then move to our consent agenda. Do I hear a motion to accept the consent agenda as written?
I'll make that motion.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor? Then the consent agenda is stands adopted as written. We'll then move on to new business, moving right along here today. We'll move on to new business and our first order of business is the policy group discussion. And we are fortunate to have both Steve and John Metcalf here with us. So I will turn this over either to you two or to Shannon, whichever you choose.
It's a pleasure, Mr. Manager.
Sure, well, thank you, Madam Mayor. Just real quick, I think as we look to find relationship with members of our delegation and are in hopes that we secure something from the General Assembly for our fine town, we just want to explore talking points that the policy group would be able to share with various and sundry folks to help us secure those things in our interest. One of the items that we recently had talked about and just would like to have this discussion with town council is possibly securing authorization through a local bill that would allow the town of Lake Lure to to use its property tax in a little more flexible manner. Specifically, if we needed to use the property tax to to help fund some of the water and sewer projects that we have in motion or may have in motion in the future. We we possibly would like to be able to use the property tax in that manner. We'd love for the General Assembly just write us a check for whatever it is that we need. Not sure that the General Assembly would would do that in that it basically puts all all taxpayers in in the state on the hook to help Lake Lure. Not that we'd be necessarily against that, but having a local bill that would authorize us to pull ourselves up by our own bootstraps, we may gain more traction taking that approach than asking for a big check. So those are the types of things we just want to talk a little bit about this morning. And with that having been said, I'd like to turn it over to Steve and John just to just to hear their thoughts. Bottom line is, we want to make sure we have good talking points. We're all on the same page when we have conversations with members of the General Assembly. Mr. Metcalf?
Thank you, Mr. Manager, Madam Mayor and the members of the council. I first of all, thank you for allowing us to be here this morning and this is an interesting conversation. And we look forward to having this. I want to make probably four points to this that or maybe five or six, but it's for sure four. But before I say that, I don't think that you want to do this. I don't necessarily think you want to do that to the exclusion of asking for some type of appropriation. You may very well do both. You may very well maybe strategically wise to do both. But we can kind of cross that bridge when we when we come to it. I would say to you that my first point that I've been thinking about this last night is this could be a good source of income for for the town. I mean, and it's your, as you know, it's at your, you're flexible with it. It's it's your authority to 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 put the tax rate at where you want to add one tax rate where you wanted and to use it for what you want to do. The, I guess the second point I would make to that though is allowing us to do some research and to just to see what the legal history is and what the the statutory and regulatory requirements would be relative to towns. I guess my own thought is, I'm not sure you can't do it already, but but we want to see maybe with your town attorney. But we want to check with our touch base with the Legislative Research Group in Raleigh. It's a a group within the legislature that does those kinds. But we have to have a a member of the General Assembly request that kind of information requested. But we'll again, we'll we'll find out. But I think that's the second point I would make to you is that we have to look at the just what is required. What would what would a local bill look like? What would it sound like? What would be the implications of it? I guess the third point that I would make to you is that I like this idea because it does in fact demonstrate to the to the General Assembly and the public writ large that the town is is willing to to make some sacrifices and to walk in and to deal with an issue without automatically asking for help from outside. We know you're going to have to have help from the outside. Everyone knows that. But if you could demonstrate to the extent that you can, that you're that you're looking and making those very difficult decisions relative to tax base and and tax rate for this purpose would be would be a good selling point to any legislative body, I would think, or a good talking. The, I guess the last point I would make and and John, you can follow me back up on something on all this if you like. But the point I would make to you is we're kind of in a holding pattern to some extent. I am doing making contact with a lot of folks within within Western North Carolina in the district relative to just their thoughts about Lake Lure and, you know, looking for potential help. But the holding pattern that we're in is is trying to figure out any any after next Tuesday. There there is, I would be, you know, in all candor, there is a lot on the table relative to the next North Carolina General Assembly. I think both houses are could conceivably change the partisan makeup or not. And the that and that will impact whatever strategy we try to develop to them. So we're we're taking a hard look at that and and just seeing with as to what the outcome would be. John, I've rambled a little bit. What's your take on? Let me just, the first three points, though, the policy questions. Is it a good idea? I think so. I think it's a good source of income. Two, as a policy matter, we do need to do the research to find out. You know, what are the legal implications and what what a bill looks like and what it sounds like? And 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 three, our strategy, we want to develop, you know, sometime post-election is as a matter of, we just need to do that. John, what are your thoughts? You got any, you got anything else? And we'll be happy to try to answer questions that you might.
So I think, no, I agree with what you said. I think, you know, it's and Dad's been doing this for a while, and it's more than me. I think the first option is fairly unprecedented. I certainly have not heard of it in my time at the General Assembly, but it would not be a problem, I think, to get Senator Hayes or Representative Rogers to go to legislative research and, you know, see, see what our options are and what opportunities we have there. We certainly have those relationships established and that's a pretty easy thing to do. I think the the that Dad's right, you know, the we're all kind of using it as an excuse for not doing a whole bunch of work this week, but it is it is a fact. I mean, we, you know, a lot of policy decisions and a lot of legislative strategy has kind of stopped dead in its tracks waiting to see what next Tuesday looks like. And that's that's kind of been the the major talking points for me with with all of our clients right now. And please know that just as kind of as a side note, we will we will get this body a an election analysis as quickly as I can on Wednesday, as soon as I can get enough coffee in me from the night before and 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 get, you know, the the results that are in. We undoubtedly will have some some protests for some protested or contested results that will will go into probably the next few days. But I do think we'll have a pretty good idea of what we're working on that Wednesday. And as I said, we will we will certainly get this body a an analysis of what we're looking at, not just in terms of who won, who lost, but what the implications are as far as leadership and and those kind of things for for certain committees and just an overall summary of what happened the night before. So no, I think, you know, I don't really have anything else to add other than to underscore, you know, what what Dad said. I believe is the is the appropriate strategy. And I think it is it is one that we could certainly employ. But but again, I I think we're going to be looking at, you know, as I tell clients, we're going to look at a potentially historic night, Tuesday night in the in the way that the General Assembly looks looks like and it's made up or not. It's going to be, it's going to be, you know, fairly close to the way it is now. I don't think that's going to be the case. I think in the Senate, you know, certainly I'm I'm no James Carville or Karl Rove here, but I I think the Senate is probably the body that we're watching the most where we could see some Democrats pick up enough seats to to overturn that body. And we're potentially, you know, looking at, I would even have seen scenarios where you got a 25-25 split and the Lieutenant Governor is is making the is splitting the vote or is the is the tiebreaker. The House is going to be a little bit more challenging. Those districts are just really challenging. I mean, regardless of how the top of the ticket goes, those 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 seats are a little bit more challenging. So I think it's a little less likely that you'll see Democrats pick up that chamber. However, I do think they'll pick up some seats, but either way, it's going to be, it's going to be an interesting night. And and we'll be reporting back to you very promptly as to what the results were and what impact we think that's going to have. So that's all I have. So thank, and any question, I'm certainly happy to answer.
So I've got something for both Steve and John, some information and some strategy in this. This initiative is would be a game changer for us actually, because right now, the fund that we're tapped out on is the sewer fund. And the legislation has always been based on, hey, you can't charge anybody sewer fees who's not actually using the system. So the strategy, if you really think about it, is that, you know, Lake Lure is unique. It's unique in so many ways. And one of the main reasons it's unique is because the whole town, the whole economy and everyone who lives in Lake Lure is dependent upon the lake. So the sewer system is really has two purposes. One is it certainly services the sewer, but the other one is it protects the lake. So the basis for using ad valorem taxes, general property taxes, is that at least a portion of sewer development goes to the preservation of the lake that is in everyone's interest. Okay, so that's kind of what we're thinking with being able to use property taxes to go after that. It's twofold, just like we talked about our valve and the dam is twofold. One operational, one emergency. The sewer system is twofold. One is an operational servicing of the sewer system. The other one is to protect the lake for everyone. And so I would share that with you. And I have more more good news. Commissioner Kilby and I met with the Deputy DEQ Director yesterday, political appointee. The CO and the XO over there on military terms, they they come as a team and that may get turned over next week, but right now they're in there. The deputy's name is John Nicholson. And I spent time with him yesterday, a couple hours with him yesterday, setting the conditions for his office, because any legislation that's kind of unknown, they'll probably go down to the agency for an impact assessment. And so I did, we decided to work bottom up and it was a target of opportunity. So with John, he is convinced that Lake Lure is a priority for North Carolina, not only for the dam, but also for the sewer system. So and he and he understands uniqueness of of the lake and the status. One of their comments was nowhere else in North Carolina do we have a 90-foot dam in the condition that it's in. The in a high-risk condition, meaning the impact of what would happen in a failure downstream. So Mr. Nicholson totally impressed with how we're trying to get ahead of the problem. Totally committed his office to help us in any way that they can. So I share that with you in case you see the legislation going down to the agency that Mr. Nicholson has has been here. He knows us and we should nurture, leverage that that relationship, so.
Yeah, that's 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 really good. And I had told the manager that I was going to try to be there myself yesterday, but I just had a commitment that I just could not change. And so I do apologize, but I will follow up with with the, I guess he's a deputy secretary.
Yes.
Level. And I have that conversation too. That's that's really good. And and I think that's important. The more people you can get on site to see that, you know, elected officials, political appointees, bureaucrats, whoever it may be, more people you have on that side, the better they're going to understand. And that's in large part why I want to be there yesterday, just so I could see personally firsthand, but I will.
But but I, you know, Steve, going after an appropriation when it comes and a and the legislation would be great. But the legislation is the most immediate thing. I mean, we're trying to find ways to resource even the valve. And we're, you know, we're, we have to go into, you know, gyrations to try to do that. If we can tap into ad valorem taxes, that is just, we start to resource on our terms instead of somebody else's terms.
That's right.
And 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 that would, that would be absolutely fantastic. We're good for the short term. We have the SRF loan to get us going, but phase two, phase three of the sewer continued refurbishment or replacement of the dam is going to count on those property taxes, which is under leverage compared to the sewer.
So if I could just ask a quick question. This change in legislation, she used the ad lorm taxes. Would it be limited just to helping with the sewer fund? Or could it, would it be, would we be able to use those ad lorm taxes, let's say, in the hydroelectric fund?
I think, Madam Mayor, it would be have a right legislation. You could, and you know, we would follow the direction of the of the town, but whatever legislation we ask for, you could, you could probably include as many uses as as you think are are good and necessary.
Or exclude them, right? I guess.
Or exclude them. You can you can get a narrow focus on them.
Yeah, we would want to limit it to just
Okay.
Narrow uses then.
Right. And that narrow use has a better, always has a better opportunity to pass, you know, to. So.
Thank you.
So the goal today was just to have a conversation with the policy group and the board about this matter, just so we could start thinking out loud and pulling ideas together and begin developing some strategy. Certainly, if they're, Madam Mayor, if there are any other board members that would like to speak.
And I'll just make a comment. Dave spoke about the Commissioner, Deputy Commissioner yesterday. That was a good two hours.
Yeah.
And there were a number of people there, I guess nine people from DEQ, from the from the local level and the office in Asheville, all the way to the head guy, George Auer. A lot of good people and I tell you, they were interested. They had a lot of questions. They appreciated putting their eyes on it. And I think some you know, some good contacts and some good initial relationships there will will go a long ways.
I'm sure all contacts and raising our profile helps to be to be sure. Any other commissioners, Commissioner Bryant, is there anything that you would like to add or Commissioner Moore?
No, I think it really covers that very well. I've seen that, you know, seeing what happens next week is going to kind of dictate some decisions there, but it's a very strong strategy for ad valorem tax use and I'm on board for all of that. So yeah, I'm all, I'm good.
Anything else, Commissioner Moore, would you like to add anything?
Yeah, my first thought was that, you know, I was wondering if maybe we were tipping our hand a little bit by expressing a willingness to pay for a lot of this out of with ad valorem taxes. When we would, of course, we prefer to get as much as we could from the state or feds, but I'll leave that decision to to the guys who know it better than, much better than me. But it was just, it was just a kind of a fleeting concern there. And I guess we could say that it's an advantage and that we, they see that we're serious and wanting to do our part. But then on the other hand, we wouldn't want them to say, well, you know, if they can take care of this, why are we doing it? But I think it's, I hope it's obvious to all that it's going to take both working together, both us and the state.
Well, I agree with that, John, too. And I think the limiting factor for the ad lorm taxes is we only have 1,200 people who live here. So it would be absolutely impossible to raise ad lorm taxes enough, you know, to cover the magnitude of these of these projects that we have. So but thank you very much. Any other comments or discussion?
I would add one thing on that point, Madam Mayor, and that is that in discussions with John Nicholson, they're, they're, you know, it's all about state priorities when an infrastructure bill hits, if it ever does hit. So on on John Moore's point, to go after appropriations, I think, is going to be some money coming down to the state level. And so the other piece of what we did yesterday was convince John that we were a priority both for sewer and for dam replacement here in Lake Lure, because the folks that are going to be making those those priorities are going to be the agencies. And so the more they know about us, the more we can set the stage. So I don't think the legislation to go after ad valorem taxes is really going to have a huge impact on an infrastructure flow of money that comes in at that time. The most important for that is to have all the foundational work, the priority set, the engineering behind us, the engineering analysis done, to be ready to go fairly quickly into design and construction for those projects is going to be the key. Nicholson agrees with that and he also agrees that we are well ahead of the power curve when it comes to that.
That's a great point.
Yeah. I think one other, one other thing for us to consider would be that we were to secure legislation for us to use property tax in a flexible manner or even a narrow manner to do things that you don't normally use property tax for. There's no way we can take care of our own needs. And we are literally racing against the clock because we have failing infrastructure. And so there's no way we can self-fund this. It's going to, it's going to have to be outside revenue, I think, as Mr. Metcalf mentioned. As we first started, we're going to have to have help with this. So if even if we secured the authority to use property tax in an abnormal, unusual manner, we're still going to have to have lots and lots of outside resources. It's going to take both, but I think being able to show the General Assembly that we're willing to do a little more to help ourselves may help us secure an appropriation like we need to to move forward with infrastructure that's 100 years old and it's rapidly deteriorating. As Lobella will attest, we've got to move fast on all fronts.
Thank you, Mr. Ball. Anyone else want to add some observations, questions, any more questions for Steve or John? Discussion? Well, we certainly thank you for joining us here today, Steve and John, and giving us the update. We will certainly wait, we will all be waiting with bated breath to hear the election results on Wednesday night. So we look forward, John, to your update on that. It certainly could have a considerable impact on on lots of different things. So thank you so much for joining us.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, Madam Mayor, I just shared one one story that I, as I say, I've made some contact with folks in the district. And one of the folks I talked to the other day, and of course, I promised these folks anonymity, so I won't tell you who it is. But he he said, you know, that's a really good council and mayor up there at Lake Lure. And I said, I think so, too. They're, he was, he just impressed at how you're systematically trying to address a problem that was handed to you over time, so.
Well, I think it's certainly concerted effort by everyone, but we appreciate your saying that certainly. Good to hear other people think that.
That's true. Yeah. Thank you, folks. We will be back.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you so very much.
Thank you.
We'll move on then to IMB, which is Access to Public Facilities and Town Meetings, Discussion and Decision. Shannon, I'll defer to you on that one.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So.
I didn't see Dustin here. I didn't see Dustin here with us. Is he?
Yes.
Okay, good. Thank you.
He's with us. So as as everyone knows, we basically are not holding advisory board meetings in town hall, for example. But another example, you know, we can have meetings of, say, town council. We're going to do a face-to-face meeting November the 10th with town council with with attorneys. So we certainly can do that, but and then folks are not allowed in town hall. Customers are not allowed in town hall and basically they're served currently through a window. Things have been working smoothly from my perspective. And we are getting the work done. It's not hindering us hardly in any manner. There may be some things, some nice to haves that are being postponed, but certainly the got to haves, the things we must do, we're moving on those, we're getting things done, we're moving forward. I think now would be a good time for us to have a discussion about whether or not we want to maintain the status quo relative to access to to town buildings as we move forward into winter, as we approach flu season, as our numbers, COVID numbers possibly go up across the nation. But just just want you to to give us some guidance on your thoughts and what you think needs to be done. That having been said, I've asked Chief Wecaster to come and just kind of give us a little bit of background on the numbers from a mercy management perspective. And then let's just have a discussion and we'll, we'll, we'll follow your directive as to what you would like for us to do. Chief?
So first of all, good morning. Nice to see all of you. The Lake Lure area has been holding pretty steady with our numbers. We've only had one test positive in the recent weeks. There's been 15,938 tests done with 1,600 positives. So we're right at 11% of people being tested, testing positive.
Dustin, that's in Rutherford County, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thanks.
And then 90, 90, almost 92% of people are out of quarantine. They've, they've already had COVID and they've recovered from it and they're out of quarantine. I did speak with our county emergency management director yesterday. He has a meeting with the Health Department Director, Ms. Karen Powell, tomorrow. And he said he would pass down any information tomorrow as well as far as how we proceed. And then a lot of it's going to play off from a week from now, how the election goes as well on different opinions on how we proceed forward with the COVID restrictions. Town of Rutherford 10 is allowing folks to come into their town hall as long as they're wearing masks and stuff. And they're keeping social distancing. They are having council meetings face-to-face with social distancing. And everyone present, present is requested to wear masks and maintain the social distancing. And I thought this was interesting. They had the department heads meet in another room and they were zooming in in case that the public had a question that the department heads needed to discuss. But Shannon and I have spoke about it and I think we, like Shannon was saying, we got a good plan in place. It's been working great. I think work's continuing to be able to be done, but and it's keeping our staff, you know. But, and it's keeping our staff, you know, safe from being exposed to anything that might come in from the public. And we, and we spoke about keeping those measures in place, maybe throughout the holiday season and into the first of next year. But of course, that's up to you guys, how you want to proceed. I did see on the news this morning, the town of Weaverville, their, their town council was talking about putting a mask mandate in with their state of emergency for COVID on the, in, inside the town for local businesses and such like that. So that might be something we could look into if we were to have a higher outbreak in the Lake Lor area. Right now, the Lake Lor area is maintaining pretty well. But as you know, our demographics is a little bit different from everywhere else in the county. So while our numbers are low, our population is low as well. But we have a high-risk community that we're protecting as well, so.
Well, I just throw in there, if you, if you're out and about on the weekend, especially, where you, we may be unique in a lot of ways, but we sure got a lot of people come in from outs, outside. I mean, it's pretty phenomenal on Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, the traffic and everything that, that we're dealing with. So I think we are unique in our size and, you know, the way we're able to control things, but we don't control the people that come in. And there's a lot of those coming in.
That's right. And just a side note, I did fail to mention this. Timney Rock State Park was pretty much at capacity the last couple of weekends, like Commissioner Kilby was mentioning.
Well, I, I don't, my, my opinion is not likely that in the next couple of months, the threat of infection from COVID will become any less. I think we're all aware, to call it a second wave is kind of a misnomer, I think. But certainly during the colder months, when people are in closer contact and they're gathering together, it certainly can't be less of a problem than it is now. So, you know, whether it's desirable for us to have the town hall closed or not, you know, I, I can't see that we're in a position to say it's better now to open it than it was two months ago. You know, it's not going to be any better in November and December than it has been in the warmer months, so. That's just my opinion.
In, in regards to boards, I'll speak for the ABC Board. We do have a couple of people on that that do not have the ability to have, to do, as they're set up now, to be able to do Zoom. And, you know, the ABC Board, like a lot of the other boards, has not met since probably March, I guess. And probably, and I think they should have a meeting, but that's just something to consider. We, we, we all, we planned to meet last month and at the last minute, we, we just decided that it wasn't worth taking a chance. You know, some elderly, besides me, there's other elderly people on that board. And so just, we were going to meet in the, in the meeting room there at town hall. And at the last minute, we, we canceled the meeting. So from, from the ABC standpoint, that's kind of where they are. Would it make, would it make sense to let, just let each board decide on their own and continue as we have been with the, with the town in general, is, in other words, keep along just as we're doing now, but let each board decide on their own how they want to meet?
Now, my only question on that, you don't think some of the boards are more risk than the town council is? I mean.
Well, yeah, that's why I say let it, let it be their decision. If they wanted to meet on Zoom, fine. If they wanted to get together in person in the, you know, in the, in the town hall, then let them, if that was what they wanted to do. That's just, I'm, I'm not saying that's what we ought to do, just saying that's a suggestion that we should think about.
And, and weather permitting, it might be, you know, fitting for some of those boards to meet outside, the kind of, just depending on the location and the accommodations that they expect.
That's a good idea. John, I think the only issue I would see with that, letting the boards make their mind up, is we would be exposing town staff and stuff if, if we let them decide to come into the meeting room and have a meeting. That, that may, maybe the only thing I see that could be an issue.
Yeah, that's a, that's a thought.
Other than the ABC Board, has anyone else had any conversations with, with the boards that you liaised with? That they were having difficulty doing it by Zoom?
I would defer to Michelle and Mitchell. Mitchell works with three boards and Michelle works with the other staff persons of the other boards. So they may have some information that can help us.
I can speak. The Board of Adjustment and Planning and Zoning Board, I'm expecting that they will hold a Zoom meeting for the November 17th meeting date. A few things have been postponed because they didn't want to meet over Zoom right away. And they were hoping that the town count, that the town will open up. But I think they're seeing that we're going to be remain closed, the potential of remaining closed. So they, I think they're all willing to participate in a Zoom meeting this time.
And Michelle just sent a chat, which I'm sure everyone can read. I've not heard that other boards have had any difficulty. John, would it be possible for the ABC Board to meet someone other than town hall? I'm not too familiar with the inner workings of the ABC building, other than where you purchase things. But is there a meeting room there or?
There is, but it's very small. And, but, you know, I can, I can, I can work with the, the two people that I know that are only two, I think, that have an issue. And, you know, we can just see what we can do if we, you know, maybe, maybe those two people could, you know, use a laptop or something that, that someone has. I mean, I'll work on that, but, you know, I, I think that's the best way to handle it. I'm not suggesting that we open up town hall for the ABC Board because of that. I think we should try to help accommodate them some way if we possibly can.
Mitchell, is it possible for us to, to maybe work with Commissioner Kilby and the two ABC Board members that don't have Zoom capability to perhaps setting up a laptop that maybe they could use in some way, some manner?
Of course, and if somebody doesn't have a device, as long as they have a phone, they can dial into any conference call. So even though they won't have a video, it'll show up just like myself or Reese or Michelle, and you'll just hear the voice.
That's, that's a good idea. Good point.
Yeah, you could send out the information earlier to them. However, you know, written information that they'd have in front of them, and then they could jump on the phone.
Yep, and I don't mind holding test meetings for anybody who needs them.
Thank you, Mitchell. Where would we be without you is all I have to say.
Amen. One last thought, I think we probably just need to have a conversation about this element of what we're discussing. Right now, folks in town hall are having to work through a window. And I think it's providing an extra layer of protection for staff and those customers. We did install a protective glass barrier when this first started. We raced to get that accomplished. It is installed. And so if we were to allow one person a time, at a time, in the foyer, we do have some, basically some measure between a staff person and the person that would come into the foyer. It's going to get cold. And I just throw that out there, I would like to hear your thoughts on that. We certainly could require a mask of a customer who comes to town hall to allow them in the foyer, but that's as far as, as they go. I would like to err on the side of safety for staff and the customer. But I, I think if we don't have this discussion, we just didn't fully vet that particular scenario. So I would like to hear your thoughts.
I think we already have a sign on the front door that says you have to wear a mask when you enter, correct? Do we not?
I'll have to check.
I, I think we do. I look at it every day. Says you have to wear a mask to enter. So, you know, that, that goes without saying, anybody who's in the foyer is going to have on a mask. So to that, that's, that's hard to accomplish. I, I do, I do agree with you. I have seen some people, and I can certainly speak to age brackets, too, being in that. There are some people I've seen standing out there, although they're being helped, that I think might have some difficulty if it were cold. Because they, some of them seemed, while I was there, to be having an extended conversation, not through, not through any fault of, of town hall, but maybe they were just having a little difficulty understanding what was going on. So that's, it could either be on a one, one-by-one decision-making, you could let somebody in who needed to, or?
Yes. So if we could give maybe front staff the discretion to let someone in, if there's, in my opinion, if there's somebody out there that looks extremely cold and they're waiting in like, somehow, I think, front staff could allow a person to come into the foyer, but let them have that discretion to make that decision. I, I would be okay with that if you guys are.
Maybe if it's a, if it's a very cold day, just open it up on that day. And then, because, you know, we have nice weather mostly through December. We'll have some, a few cold days in there, but just do it on a day-by-day basis, depending on the weather.
You know, on that day, you could kind of like they do at the doctor or the dentist, people could wait in their cars. If one person's in the lobby, the other people, person could wait in their cars and then come out in after that person leaves.
Chief, your thoughts?
I think, I think those are all great ideas of working out a way that we can get, you know, use a case-by-case discretion on whether or not somebody can come in. And then, you know, we can always sanitize after somebody leaves if, if they have to come into the foyer area. Also, I think it's worth noting that, you know, the governor and his office is monitoring these, these counties that are getting a spike in the cases. So there may be more restrictions coming fairly soon if they see a hotspot or an area where they're getting a lot of positives.
Well, I think unfortunately for Rutherford County, you know, because I think they've had 45 deaths so far. But, you know, 20 of those are in one nursing home. So I think it shows a little bit different, and I think there are 118 people who were infected in that nursing home. So, so that's a, that's, that's not unexpected, but it does sort of skew the numbers for all of Rutherford County a little bit.
Well, based on this, this, this discussion and the wisdom that's been put forth, I think we'll come up with a, a plan and let staff in the front manage, manage that. And we'll come up with a, a strategy and a clear policy and let them exercise their discretion in implementing that policy.
And I also noted to County Emergency Management, if anything comes out of that Health Department meeting tomorrow to pass it down to us, so that way we can make some adjustments if need be.
But as far as access to town hall advisory boards, we're going to stay the course until we get through perhaps mid-January, if that pleases the Board. We'll reassess mid-January.
You know, and I think on that point, I think some people have found, once they got more comfortable with having to have, with the couple of the IT part about being on Zoom, they get to more comfortable with doing the Zoom calls than they were before. So, so that could be, thank you, Mitchell, and everyone who can help people with that part of it.
Great team.
Any other discussion then, before we move to? All right, thank you, and thank you so much, Chief Wecaster, as always. We'll move to item number C then, Phase 1 Sewer Project Development Discussion and Decision. Shannon, I'll turn that over to you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So I know there, there are others on, on this call that will need to weigh in. But just a real quick summary, the engineering report, environmental impact documents have been submitted to DWI for review. They're under review. Yesterday, there was a conversation had with, between Lobella and Ken Pollock and, and other personnel at DEQ about the sewer system. It sounds like to me, and that's why I do want other people to weigh in. Madam Mayor was there, Commissioner Diorio, or Madam Mayor was, was in there. I do want other people to, to weigh in. I would have to say, as, as, and we have Lobella here, and I certainly want them to speak. This is a, this is a, an unprecedented system. The technology is not, it's been used in other places. But as far as stringing together a series of technological advances in sewer, we're having to do that because this is, this is a, really an unprecedented system. And we're putting, reinstalling a subaqueous sewer system with different technology. DEQ has, has some, has some questions, and we're working through those, and we are making progress. Full faith and confidence in the engineers that are doing this project. That's not, that's not in any way a concern of mine as your town manager. I think one of my concerns is, before we sign up for design, that we make sure that we have all of DEQ's questions answered relative to the EREID and that we fully understand basically what any mandates are that are coming from DEQ. Once we know the answers to those questions, and once we have turned those variables into constants, then to me, that's the green light, to sign the document and start design. I know that we're trying to race to hit a, a schedule that we have in place. But if we were to take a little different direction at the treatment plant, based on what DEQ mandates, that basically could suck up more money than we've allotted for the treatment plant. That means we, the dominoes would fall, we would have to put in less HDPE around the lake than we would like to. So as your manager, these are some of my concerns. One, just make sure we get the, the EREID at a place to where DEQ is happy and satisfied with it. Once that happens, then we sign the Task Order Number 6 to unleash Lobella on, on design. So the document you have in your packet basically is, is that proposal for Task Order Number 6 to unleash Lobella on design. But personally, I still feel like there are some things that need to be, need to be resolved. Now, Commissioner Diorio has been neck-deep in this, working with the UAB. The mayor has been involved in these meetings. And ultimately, I'm going to defer, as any good manager would, to town council on this issue, so.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Do we, do we have any indication from DEQ on when we will get those items, you know, more specific, and we have an idea when they will have those to us?
It's going to happen very shortly, Commissioner Kilby. The questions, they're getting ready to le, unleash those or send those to us, really in two to three days. So it's going to happen quickly. It's, it's not like we're months out. But with that having been said, I had to step out of the meeting yesterday to attend to another legal matter and wasn't able to complete that meeting. But I know Mayor Pritchett was, was there and finished that meeting. So I think that's germane to this particular discussion. And again, we have Lobella with us and also Commissioner Diorio. So, Madam Mayor, I'll turn it over to you.
Well, I thought it was a very productive meeting, and I think that it was probably more necessary than, from the standpoint of Ken Pollock, anyway, and the others that we thought it was, because it truly gave them an, an opportunity to ask some of the questions that I think were questions that were going to be comments or concerns in the letter that were coming to us, and an opportunity for them to talk. It turned into much engineer-to-engineer, which is absolutely appropriate. And I would just like to, to thank and commend both Reese and Brian, everyone at Lobella, for being so open and forthcoming and patient in answering all the questions. And I think that, I think that DEQ seemed to me to be appropriately wary about this. And that's in no way a question of the engineering of the process, but just wary because we've been down this road before. And in making sure that everybody is, is sure that they, they're on the same plane before any answers are given. So I, I think that it will be a couple of days. At first, it seemed to be two days. Now it seems, I don't know why, but it seemed to me it was like the end of this week or the beginning of the next week. And, and some of that could have been because of some questions that were raised yesterday at the meeting. And I'll let Lobella go into all those things. But, you know, they, they went on to talk about some concerns that they had, which were not just engineering questions, but had to do with, for instance, increasing the number of people, users, on the system. And at first, that sort of, at first, our, our. And, um, at first, that sort of, at first it, our, our, your, the normal response to that was, well, that, that's more revenue for us, of course. But their question was whether or not the system and phase one would, um, have the capacity, um, to add those users. And that's a good question. You know, and something we certainly need to think about and turned out to be, as did most of the questions, an engineer and answer. So, you know, I thought all things sort of turned out to be an engineer and answer, which was good. I think one of the main things, uh, besides all the, um, description and, and explanation of the spreadsheet, which, uh, Brian very patiently went through with everyone, uh, was that they're looking at, or my opinion is they're sort of looking at phase one as, with respect to it's a part of a huge project, but they want to know how it is a standalone project. Because they are, are aware of the fact that, as they said, it could be ten, fifteen, twenty years before we even got to phase two. And so to that point, they need to be sure before they approve it, that it by its own self is a standalone project. If you ever, never added anything else. So I, I was very pleased with it and I thought, once again, I just, uh, I thank everyone who was there and I'll, David, you were there for a part of it, the, the beginning of it too, and I'll certainly turn it over to you, but, um, I thought there was a lot of good information and I thought there was a lot of good rapport. And, um, they seemed very eager to continue with meetings like that. I believe they indicated, though I'm not sure they were invited, but I believe they indicated, uh, that they would like to be on our, our next, um, sewer meeting, for lack of any other word, to call it that, next Tuesday. So, I think that altogether it was, it was a very good start. David, do you want to add?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, so, uh, all, all great points and, uh, I really concur with the approach that we don't sign task six until we know pretty sure that the engineering report is gonna be signed because of course that goes on to the yes, being able to tap into the SRF funds. The problem is, if we go ahead now with design and we have problems with that, we're on the hook without any SRF backup to pay those bills as they start to accumulate. So I think it's just a little bit early, but I also think that that's okay because the design right now, though we want to get, we want to move forward, Lobella certainly wants to move forward. It's not the limiting path right now. The limiting path is the valve, not the design. So we have a little bit of time to play with. So I think it's just a little premature to be signing task order six. I think we're, you know, we're gonna get to a point where, where that, um, uh, design path is gonna become limiting. If it, if it goes too long, then we have another decision to make. But right now, we hold on to tax, task six. Lobella, I would encourage them to do whatever they can, precursors to design that they can do. Uh, they'll have to do perhaps a little bit of that at risk. They may be willing to do that, I'm not sure. But, uh, but we as a town can't assume that risk, uh, right now until we have a clearer path. So I think, I think that's a good call on, on, on all that.
And I, I failed to mention Kurt. Kurt turned his screen on and I see him and that reminded, Kurt's been in the middle of this entire time, so.
And he was there for the whole meeting yesterday too. Kurt, would you like to add anything before we talk with Lobella or?
Yes, um, I agree completely with, uh, Mayor Pritchett and, um, Dave, Commissioner Diorio and what they said. And I would like to emphasize something that, uh, David Diorio said about risk, uh, right now. There's, there's a bit of an overlap here. Um, this would be the town of Lake Lor, this would be Lobella. The town of Lake Lor has a very, uh, deep concern, which I appreciate, of not starting design on an unapproved ER EID. I get that. Lobell, on the other hand, has to start at a certain point in order to get the pipe in the ground next winter. And having been involved in Clean Water State revolving fund projects, having gone through the ER and EID, the comments that come from DWI, answering all of those till you get a signature on approval of an ER and EID, moving into design. And then what happens when you turn your design in, you have to go through that whole same review process, answering comments on the design. Those review comment periods by DWI, which is now with ER and EID, and then again during the design phase, are, uh, timeout elements that neither the town of Lake Lor or the engineer can really control. Um, Lobella, I've done this myself, answer every question you can possibly to the fullest extent you can answer it, and still you get more. And, and you can't control DWI. Uh, so, um, keeping the design on a path where you can get plans and specs, you can get out the bid. Uh, you have these uncontrollable two segments of time in it. So I'm just raising that specter. It's a specter. Um, it's a, it's an uncontrollable factor. Uh, the engineer can't really control, they can do the best they can, and I think Lobella, I have every confidence Lobella will do that. And the town's gonna do everything you can. I mean, I have never experienced in pretty much all my career as much collaboration as is going on now on an ER and EID. This is great. This is actually, in my view, uh, it is almost the poster child of how it should work. Um, and you've, and you're doing that because you've had a bad experience. Your, your past bad experiences teaching you or motivating you to, to coordinate very tightly with the regulatory agencies, which should always be done. Uh, I think one thing it can help is inviting Ken. Ken's, um, a unique individual. He, he really is. Um, he's, he's an unusual state employee. I have high respect for Ken, a lot of kudos for Ken Pollack. He appears to be willing to be on these, uh, weekly update, uh, calls. If he is, he should be there. Because it's gonna reduce the number of questions that you're going to get. And, um, I think we can get, um, accelerate the pathway to an approved ER and EID if Ken is on those calls. But to the point that Commissioner Diorio made, relative to at risk, probably, uh, the town, I know that Lobella's on here. I see that not only Reese, but Brian's on here. I can't speak for them. I don't want to pressure them. I, you know, it's not my place or call to do that. But they probably are facing internally, uh, an issue of going ahead and doing some design at risk because Ken is asking, he, he literally said, we're asking for more design on this project during the ER and EID, which we normally don't do. And so Lobella's facing that pressure that they have to do a lot of hydraulic design and prove to Ken that it'll work, which is the type of design that would actually occur during the design phase. And I'll stop there. And I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you so much, Kurt. Um, and I know Reese and Brian are also on too, so could you add anything to what we've already discussed? I'm sure you can.
Uh, sure. I wanted to, uh, thank all you guys that were in the, the various meetings yesterday. Um, and, uh, the, I thought the meeting with Ken went very, very well. Um, it's always, he is a, um, he's, he's a very soft spoken guy, uh, but he's extremely intelligent. And he asks the hardest questions of anybody up there. So we like to get him in the fray. Um, and people don't realize this, but you know, he's a PhD. I mean, he's, you know, he is, he can stump you. Uh, let's put it this way. So, um, and he did say, you know, we're asking for more than we normally do. And that's true. And we've done more than we typically do for an ER and EID. And then he's asking for more on top of that. And a lot of this has to do with the fact that, um, that this really hasn't been done before in North Carolina. And, um, it, the, the numbers indicate that it'll work. The physics indicates, you know, that it will work. But I think that, that DEQ is rightfully a little, they get a little nervous when you start doing things they haven't ever done before. Um, and so we'll walk them, we'll walk them through that. And so there's gonna be work that, you know, we're gonna have to do. Um, as Kurt said, that would technically be, uh, final design, uh, for the ER and EID phase. Um, which is, which is unusual, but, but we're partners with you and we're gonna go with it and we're gonna do what we need to do to get the ER and EID done. Um, you know, as I have people who, who come available, who could be, um, you know, as you could imagine, when you're putting together a CAD file of this size, there's a lot of groundwork that needs to be done and pulling files together. And I won't bore you with the CAD terminology, but, you know, as, as we can, we're gonna start, you know, getting our, our kind of gears together. Um, we do have some timelines approaching and Commissioner Dioro is correct. The, the first one coming up is the valve. Um, and Schnabel has given us the first of, of, you know, has given us November to, to get started. So we're quickly approaching when they would need to be released, um, in order to guarantee the valves in, uh, by the, by the time we start construction. We're not at the date for us yet. Um, and as Kurt mentioned, it, it's, uh, whenever you deal with a regulatory agency, uh, they're very much hurry up and wait. Um, and, you know, they'll give you a letter and you respond in three days and they may take two weeks to get back to you. So, fortunately, this one has caught, um, everyone's attention. And we're getting a lot of cooperation, a lot of involvement. Um, Ken has even taken his time and, you know, looked at some of the flow data and done analysis that he sent to Kurt and I, saying, hey, look at this. So, um, this certainly has their imagination. And so I'm very encouraged by what we're hearing and what we're seeing. Um, but like I say, this is, um, this is a new approach. It's a unique approach. Um, and I think we're just gonna have to, we're gonna have to hold the state's hand, um, as we walked in through this.
Thank you so much, Reese. Uh, Brian, did you want to add any, anymore or?
Uh, no, I, I think, um, Reese is capturing it. There, there is definitely work that, um, they're asking for that is beyond what we would do in an ER EID. Um, you know, I, I tried to push back on Ken a little bit yesterday, you know, and, and he really wasn't gonna have it. So, um, you know, he, he wants us to do more work and, you know, I'm, I'm trying to figure out how I can do that and not spend six weeks trying to do it, how I can get it done in a few days and get something over to him. Um, but normally this would be like the first steps of the final engineering.
Yeah, that's a dilemma for sure. Um, any commissioners, any other questions that, that you have or, or observations?
Madam Mayor, if I could, very briefly, and I will be very briefly, just to get, uh, the council an update in a parallel uh, initiative on this topic, which is, uh, policy development. So the UAB met with, uh, North Carolina policy folks yesterday. Of course, you were part of that meeting as well. Good news, um, the authorities that the town has to go after, uh, system development fees, um, availability fees, uh, operating fees at an appropriate level. We have a lot legislatively, we have a lot of authority to go after a number of those and to use some of those as leverage and incentive for, for folks, new folks in particular, to hook into the system. Um, that, that was, uh, all really good news. Um, but there are other policy, uh, implications that are gonna affect Brian and Reese with design, specifically on how we allow existing systems to hook in. And we're still sorting through that. So it's, it's perfect that we're doing this policy development at the same time, just before design. The two will merge very nicely to get there, but there's a lot of work to do, but, uh, uh, it, it's moving forward. So I'll give you, uh, occasional updates as, as we move along with that.
Yeah, I thought that was a very productive meeting and they also, um, from the, um, school of government, they were very contributory and, and, um, and pleased, I think, and offered their help for, for future. And I, I think that's one thing I saw all day yesterday, sort of being in the sewer all day. Uh, all of the people from the state or from the, uh, school government, everyone seems very well, willing to participate with us and offer their services. And I think that, that, um, that it shows, uh, certainly very, something good about them, but I think it also, my opinion only, it shows that they are, um, confident that we're interested in getting all the input that we can get. And I think that's certainly a good attitude for us to be showing them. Uh, one thing they did mention, that one of our options on getting people to, um, tie in was that the council could mandate a connection. That that is legal. So there are, and you, you can do that in conjunction with some other things too, but that certainly is one, uh, one option. Is that the council can mandate that. Um, anything, Commissioner Kilby or Commissioner Moore or Commissioner Bryant, is there anything that you would like to, any questions or any um, co- observations?
I don't have any questions.
Okay.
I, I have one quick one please. Uh, uh, so I guess we're, we're looking at what we, we're gonna decide today. And so are we gonna wait a few more days before we get through this to sign this? Is that, is that what?
I think, I think my recommendation to town council would be that we, we, uh, turn what is a dynamic, situation into one that's static. In other words, we know where DEQ is on this ER EID. Once we have them approve it, then we're good to sign for task order number six. That's my recommendation. But I, again, I'll defer to town council.
I will say, and correct me if I, uh, didn't understand this correctly. I, I did not get the feeling that in two, three, four days, there was gonna be an approval of the ER EID. That's simply when the letter will come with the multiple questions and comments that they have. I think the meeting yesterday, uh, probably moved that process along a lot, you know, and, and perhaps having them there next Tuesday did. But, um, that they were not, they did not give any sort of indication of when the approval of the ER EID would be, simply when we would get the letter.
And if I, if I could interject, I think you're absolutely right. And that's something that I have tried to, to push Ken on, um, as a timeline. Um, if we're talking approval within weeks, um, then I feel confident of meeting our construction window. If weeks turns into months, um, then, uh, I, I fear the ability to meet our construction window. So I just want to
Uh, comment to make.
Lay that out there.
That I will predict that the path that, that we're currently on, you will not see an approval in November. You will not see an approval on the ER EID in November. It's not possible. And here's why. Um, I fully believe in Ken and Trupi, what they said, that this letter would come out by the end of the week. But I will tell you what that meant. That means that Ken and Trupi will have drafted the letter. And he just probably got to sign it. Once that hits, whoever has to sign their, their desk, their desk is stacked this high with paperwork. So Ken and Trupi will have their stuff in there and they'll be done. And that's what they were saying. But then you have to actually get the letter. That sometimes can take a week. So I would not be surprised. And I, I'm, again, I'm not throwing shade on Ken and Trupi. I think they've been genuine people. You won't see that letter till next week. Then the, Lobella's gotta respond to it. It will be the following week. You see how it's going? Then that letter's gonna go back to Ken and Trupi and they're gonna go through the whole thing again. And there probably will be another letter, shorter with some more comments. So you're gonna take all of November, my prediction. I hate to be, um, sort of a party pooper here, but, it's going to be between Lobella and Ken and Trupi and Anita Robertson and the environmental folks. Um, you have to get through that. Uh, frankly, I'm not concerned about the environmental folks. Um, I won't go into the, the weeds with that. If you want to, we can, but, uh, that would probably take too much time. But I think Landon is going to run interference for you. I'll just predict that. The regional office down there, uh, Landon wants this thing done and he knows the kind of, um, shall we say, concerns that the environmental folks bring up, that Landon may not frankly share. And I think he's going to be on the side of the town of, uh, Lake Lor. And, uh, we gotta get through all that. And it's gonna take all of November. So you're not gonna see an approval until December. And then you're in the holiday season. When you're in the holiday season, uh, not much happens up at this stage. When you get around Christmas time, you're not gonna get approvals and letters and responses and comments. This is gonna slow down pretty significantly. So we're now approaching the holiday season with a stamped approved ER and EID. I, I, I'm just being a pragmatist here. You'll be lucky if you get a stamped letter signed saying this is approved by the end of the year. I, I would say you'd be doing good. There's the rub, because, uh, Lobella should be starting design probably end of November, first, mid-December. And that's, that's that overlap issue I'm talking about.
So, so on that point, Kurt, and I should have mentioned this earlier. I don't think, I'm suggesting, um, or would recommend that we wait for a signed ER EID before we sign task six. All I'm suggesting is we get to a point where all of DEQ's questions are answered to their satisfaction. Because always, at the end of this thing, the, the process goes into administrative phase to get all the, everything signed. We're not at that confidence level yet. We're getting there. But I think, uh, once the letters from DEQ stop with asking more questions and the questions that have been posed to Lobella and they and the questions that have been posed to La Bella and they respond to are kind of to their satisfaction or really close. I mean, it's a judgment call, but I think we'll get to that point. And that's when we sign task six, not waiting for the signed E R E I D.
You know, I think that's another reason it's, it's important to invite, if they will, and have Ken Pollack and the others join us on our Tuesday calls, because I think that helps answer questions in real time. Sometimes you don't have to wait for the letter to go back and forth or comments.
And I absolutely agree. And, and they will be invited to any and all meetings that they would like to attend. To point to the environmental questions, we have gotten recommendations from the Wildlife Resource Council. We have not heard from Fish and Wildlife yet. That was one of the things they shared with us yesterday. I did reach out to the Asheville Regional Office who then reached out to the Central Office in Raleigh. The recommendations that the Wildlife Resource Council put in their, in their letter are not currently required by any wastewater plant in North Carolina. So that kind of what Kurt was alluding to. The environmental folks will literally ask for the moon. What we're required to meet is our M P D S permit. And so the only way that we would be required to meet those is if the E Q puts those in our M P D S permit. So just, just throwing that out there that I think it's, it's unlikely that the, the, you know, the, the P P C Ps and E D Cs, basically it's pharmaceuticals medicines to, you know, get into the system and cosmetics to get into the system will be part of our M P D S permit, I think is rather slim.
So it sounds like to me, Madam Mayor, that we're just, we're gonna play this by ear. We're gonna keep close contact communication with D E Q on a weekly basis. And we get possibly to a point to where we're comfortable with all the engineering technical questions have been answered. Comes down to administrative approval and we'll decide at that time whether or not to approve task order number six. We could do that with a special meeting, town council if, if we need to. So we're, 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 we're nimble and we'll, we'll, we'll turn as we need to in order to move, keep, keep the same moving forward.
I agree. I think that does that pretty well sum up everybody's feelings on this now that it's just gonna be a ongoing adaptable thing. We'll see where we are as the information presents itself. And there is no more discussion on that then. Reese and Brian, thank you so much for joining us. I know you feel like you're our constant visitors now, something every day. We appreciate it very much. And, and once again, thank you so much for doing such a good job. Because I did not feel that Ken was negative or skeptical at all about the designs. He simply wanted more information and that was sort of the tone of the whole meeting. So I thought that was extremely positive. Thank you both so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
We will then move on to I M D, which is a golf course property discussion and decision. And either Dean, Shannon, would you like to go right to Dean or would you like to begin?
Just, just real brief, Dean, Dean Givens, as you guys know, is a wonderful director and he's doing a great job. This is a project that he has inherited and he continues to, to move forward in the direction that we believe town council would like to go. That having been said, he's, he's drafted basically a memo and he has outlined all the things that we need to consider as, as we make important decisions about this property. With that having been said, I'd like for Dean, Dean, if you will, just walk us through the memo that you have crafted, created, hit the high points. And then let's have a discussion with, with the board.
Okay. Good morning, everybody. The, basically what I've done was I've done a lot of research trying to figure out what has and has not been done in the past and how the golf course has operated. Moreover, you can read in the memo that it's always operated at a loss. There's been some significant money put into the course to get it up to par for a, for a subcontractor or concessionaire to operate this golf course. The goal was always was to start off at $75,000 a year subsidy with the goal of reducing that subsidy over the next few years. In fact, that subsidy has went up instead of down. And so also debunking the rock, the Donald Ross design for historic measures. That, I mean, I think that's something that we all already knew, but just seeing it on paper and what I have been able to find in archives kind of gives us a, a reality check of in the last four decades, losing around $5 million on the golf course. So looking to go forward, looking at different options, just subdividing the, the tracks, selling them as a whole. Ideas and things that could happen if part of this land was sold and developed, that would fund the redevelopment of another part of the golf course or moving, building some of it into commercial space. It's, there's just multiple things that we could do. It would help to have a company that could help us with those decisions to find out what we want to do. And also attached here is a draft of a, of an R F P. It is not ready to go yet. It is simply a draft. You will find some clerical errors and different things in there that are not right. But this was, this is just an idea of putting it out that a concessionaire would come in and run this thing and give the town 15% of all proceeds, the same as we do with other concessionaires like Lur tours, Brumman Ball, et cetera. And if we look back at the history, that's never been done. I don't know that this would ever work, but it's just another option for us to pursue. If that's the, if that's the pleasure of the council and mayor. And some of the things of on the memo, if you look at the bottom of the memo where it says current progress, I've received a bid from Withers and Ravenow to help us do a master plan. I've developed the R F P to continue the golf course operations. We've attempted to set a meeting with Dale and cannot get a date from Dale to meet with, with you, the council. I have gotten some information from Dale, but it's mainly the monthly reporting stuff that he already does. We, I've studied the golf course concession agreement, researched the history. And then I've contacted her, your direction at the last meeting was to look at some companies for appraisal of the golf course. I've received one back from T B Harris at $6,500. I don't think that has the level of detail that I was looking for. I received another one yesterday. Yesterday afternoon, I received one from the Marwin Group in Hendersonville or Fletcher. And theirs is at $15,000 to appraise the land. But they really went to work and broke down everything about this. It was the entire track as a whole. The entire track was sewer, the entire track was sewer and water. The clubhouse side of the land, again, with, with sewer, with water. The other side with sewer, with water and as is. So it's kind of giving you an idea of, they're gonna break it down and show you what it's worth today. What it would be worth if you add utilities to it and kind of give you a better idea of what we're actually sitting on.
Thank you.
Yeah.
John.
I think, I think we need an appraisal is the next step. And it sounds like the, um, the, the detail in the group from Fletcher is more what we're looking for. It, but it, everybody might not have been bidding on the same thing. I'm wondering if it would be possible, Dean, to take a list of some, of some of the things that we most or all of the things that are on the Fletcher report and ask others to include those on their, in their appraisal as well. And did you, um, well, I guess you, you checked with Charlotte and Asheville, maybe the Greenville Spartanburg area. Did you check with any appraisers in those directions?
I have the first one that I gave you, the $6,500, the H B Harris, they are out of Charlotte. And like I said, I would like to reengage them to make sure we're getting the level of detail as the Fletcher company. Vanguard Realty in Charlotte has not responded other than an initial phone call. Hotel Club Associates Greensboro has not responded other than a phone call. And then where I've got three others, but have no responses. One of those three others was the company out of Fletcher that I just gave you the, the full detail on.
Okay. And I'm sure those, with those proposals came their resumes, I guess.
Not at this moment. This is just a, I was just trying to get an idea. They will give resumes and all that if we decide to look at them. Or I could add them to this.
Yeah, we, we should make, make that part of the list that we need to see their experience as, as we make our decision. Do, do the rest of you guys agree with me that we, that an appraisal is the best step for now?
Absolutely.
Yes, definitely.
Yeah, it'd be good to have Dean. I'm sure it sounds like the, the Fletcher guys were, were appraising each side of the road or making a subset so that you could see what each side of the road is worth. And it might also be worthwhile to maybe separate out the Detmer Watch Trail because it sits back kind of in an area that's, that's almost like a, like a third part of a pile there where you've got, you know, value for each of the different three areas. They, they're each kind of unique.
Yes, sir.
Comment? If, if you are having this company appraise it for sewer, that is probably something that La Bella should pay attention to. If you are pointing to or thinking about selling this for significant revenue, if you sewer that, it will increase its value and it's gonna increase the flow to the system that's right there at the dam.
And, and that was one of the things, Kurt, thank you for bringing that up. I was gonna mention that. That was one of the questions yesterday that they had. If we increase the customer base, you know, and that certainly would dramatically, which would be a good thing, but that would feed into the capacity of, of that phase one.
Yes.
So I mean, I think, yeah, I think we can't consider, as always, we can't consider anything in a vacuum. Everything is, is certainly affected by other things.
So to give you an idea, we've, we have old plans for this area that basically calls for perhaps because of the view potential, a hotel motel right on top of the hill may be that we have to work in conjunction with the joint property owner, but there's an opportunity there to, to increase our commercial tax base, to increase customers to our sewer system, water system. That's a high user. Moving on to other uses, I know we've talked about, you know, workforce type housing that could be in the form of, could be in the form of apartments or, or condo. There's, there's a lot of possibilities there that could increase our tax base. That could increase our customers for utilities. So there's also talk, one time we looked at the property across from the pumps there at Ingalls to possibly as a site where the town may want to relocate the A B C store. We own the property. That's an area that if you move the A B C store out on N C nine, you could potentially grow the business. Keeping the A B C store where it is right now, you're not gonna steal any of the, the, the customers from the Columbus store. If you moved it to N C nine, you could possibly steal some of the customers from the Columbus store and grow, grow the bit. There's all kind of opportunity down there on the corner, Island Creek Road. That's a commercial lot that could possibly be sold to, to a, a, a user that depends on high traffic volume on the corner of N C nine and, and Island Creek Road. There are parcels next to the school that have been considered for various and sundry uses. They're actually part of the bill that the town of Lake Lor secured for that property to be used for educational purposes. So there's all kinds of uses on this property depending on what this town would like to do with that, that, that property. And I think that's why Dean and I are, are kind of fans of this idea that we at least go through a process so that we can kind of flesh out highest and best use for various portions of this property. Once we kind of get a feel for that, we would know exactly how to create an R F P and send it to appraisers for them to do their, do their thing with or without utilities. But that having been said, I think we've got enough from this Fletcher, this company in Fletcher, that we could create an R F P. From that, we could send it out to all those we have listed. If you guys know of other commercial appraisers, you want us to send this R F P to. We can do that and we can make sure that kind of without knowing what we want to do with various sections of this, we, we can get close. And we can at least to begin to get an idea of what the potential revenue stream would be for, for the town. Depending on what decisions we make as we move forward relative to utilities.
So just a quick question. And so in, in view of the fact we'll be sending out, you know, R F Ps for, for our price holes, will, will we then postpone sending out R F P management contracts to people? I, I mean, it seems like we'd have to decide we were not gonna do a golf course anymore in order to use for, for different use. And so if that's the case, what would be the point in, in sending out and people to apply to be, to manage the golf course if we weren't gonna use it for that purpose?
I think what we did, Madam Mayor, is to create really a mock draft R F P. And it's a type of R F P that basically says that, that we're kind of raising the bar. If we're gonna do a concession agreement in the future, no longer will there be a subsidy. And, and more than, more importantly, we want a scenario where we're making at least 15% just like we're asking other people to do. So if we've got somebody that can meet that threshold, we might want to entertain it. But right now, that bar I think is, is so high. We may not have anybody that would be interested for that reason.
Okay. So when I read it, that I assumed we were just trying to make the bar so high that nobody would be willing to do it. I mean, I have no problem with that. I don't, I don't think there should be a golf course there, but because I, you know, I just think, I don't know philosophically, I guess it would be useful to us as a council to decide what we want to do with that property. Before we go down the, the road of could somebody make it profitable? I doubt anybody can make that golf course profitable. That's just my opinion. I'm not a golfer, but okay. That's what I thought it was just out there.
But Madam Mayor, if I, if I could, so to step back and do both of these at the same time, this is kind of, and this is food for discussion. So to step back a minute, right, right now, April of 22, the existing contract with Dale Minnick is up. And Dale has told us now in an email that he's, that with the terms and the direction that we're going, he's not really interested in, in upping the contract. We know that. So I, I would suggest that we have two approaches that can be working in parallel. The appraisal in accordance with, with John Moore was talking about absolutely appropriate. I think that in the R F P, we identify at least a framework for what we see the different pieces. John talked about three of them. I think with the A B C and the other side of the water tower, tower, we may actually have four or five different options. Spell that out in the R F P. Get it appraised and start moving down that path for the eventual result of, of selling the property or, or pieces of the property for further development. At the same time, I think it would be wise at this point to make the potential contract for a golf course mature that. Dean already has a framework for that. Put that out there for revenue coming into the town. And the contract can be structured to have option years. So you do one year. So you do one year, option for another year, option for another year. So you're always within a one-year window of being able to cancel the contract and going with someone who would want to purchase the property. In the meantime, the benefit is perhaps a fifteen percent income and taking care of the property without any additional cost to the town. There may or may not be somebody that's willing to do that. Worst case on that path is that no one's interested and we brought ourselves into relatively minor maintenance. Um, I I say minor maintenance, but we'd be basically need to cut the grass on the golf course to make it a pre- uh, uh, presentable for sale. So I would I would propose that we go down both these paths and keeping that one where one-year window on the contract to turn it over to a potential buyer at that point. Then we have the appraisal, we have, we know what that thing is worth, putting it on the market with a good commercial, uh, investment agency and, uh, and work it, uh, work it that way. Um, I value everyone's opinion on that.
I'm sorry, that was my mistake. I thought it said when I read that it was just a draft that it was a five-year contract. So it did say there was a hundred and eighty degree, uh, a hundred and eighty day out for for either party. So I guess you could always use that, but, uh, I I I I just must have overlooked the fact that would it be a a a year after year renewal thing?
It it's not, but we can structure it that way. I say we change it.
Well, and that was my concern, just that we were committing ourselves to somebody for five years.
Oh, no, that's ridiculous.
It's not what we wanted to do.
I I agree, Madam Mayor, we should, I I would propose that we do not do that. But we can structure a contract for to for to go out five years with one-year incremental options on the contract to to be executed.
I I'm certainly not a golf course expert, but I, you know, the, uh, right now golf courses in general are suffering. And so I I think to put that proposal out there is a good idea and I think it's a good idea for this reason. Uh, we didn't just decide to close the golf course. If we put that out there, we'd get no no proposals. No one's interested in taking over the golf course to try to make it something that's failed for ever since it's probably been in existence. No one's agreeing to take the chance to make it successful. So from our citizen's standpoint, we will have answered that argument that that we've just taken this po- this property that the town owns, you know, uh, prime property, and we've decided just to take take away the golf course. And I think the way we do that is by, I don't think it's going to cost us a lot of money to put out, you know, to to the to the golf course community, someone interested in taking over this golf course and making money with it. And we will have covered ourselves by doing that. That's my opinion. Well, this this will be the second time we've done it. Uh, we we did it back, uh, before David, I mean, before, uh, Dale, uh, took it over and, um, uh, we had the group out of, I think they were out of Hendersonville or Flat Rock that, uh, gave it a shot and that didn't go anywhere. And then, uh, we've got what we have now and we've tried running it ourselves, which which wasn't, uh, I won't say a disaster, but it was just not, uh, profitable. Um, the one one thing, I I agree with what, uh, uh, Dave said, but the one thing I'll add, I think we, uh, I want to caution everybody to understand that in the, um, the in some of the documents that I read for today's meeting, we were referring to maybe affordable housing out there. Now, affordable housing in the real estate industry is 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 equal to government subsidy. And I really don't, I I I I could not support having government subsidized housing out there. And I don't think that was what was intended. It's, uh, more workforce housing, I think, is, uh, probably the more more of the term we should use. But, uh, let's, unless we, unless everybody except me wants to agree that we want government housing, I think we need to not call it affordable housing in our, um, in in our, uh, documents.
I agree with you, John, on that definitely. Shannon and I met on October sixth about the subject about the golf course. It's been on my mind quite a bit with Parks and Rec and, um, I actually came to him and said, you know, what about this RFP? We do it with Lake Lure Tours and all these others and it's 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 gained a lot of traction. Commercial development on those other properties is huge. And, um, I agree, John, uh, affordable housing, not really the term, but for somebody like me who is a working professional in their mid thirties, something three hundred thousand dollars or less falls into a an affordable price range for a typical family. You know, and that's something that is lacking in our area, something that they can create an investment in, first family home, that sort of thing. Uh, condos, uh, something that they can make an investment in and be, you know, sort of, uh, full-fledged members of the community, not just apartments that are for that necessarily. Um, because then they're committed to here, increase your tax base, increase your, uh, citizenship and then provide opportunity for commercial development because you have more year-round, um, residents here. So it, uh, it all falls into a lot of really good things that can happen, uh, based on what comes of the RFPs.
Any more, um, questions or observations?
Madam Mayor, if I if I may, next steps would be that, uh, Dean's department will work up an RFP to release to, uh, all the folks we have listed, um, to do a commercial appraisal. We will further refine the draft RFP and we certainly can release that, um, so that see what kind of responses we do get. Uh, we may not get any, as we've discussed. Another option would be that, uh, we take a look at the existing, uh, uh, contract. There may be an addendum that possibly we could add to the existing contract that basically, um, uh, eliminates the subsidy um, and adds a fifteen percent requirement for continuation uh, for the existing contract. I know that William has expressed concern. William, this may be a time for us to bring this up. We may have reached our limit, uh, with the lease on the existing golf course property because we're into that beyond the ten-year or in that ten-year range where North Carolina is just not the thing we can do.
Oh, Shannon, this is, uh, I I don't mean to appear to be jumping around here, but there's a reason I ask is the, uh, it it what's the progress on the retirement center that they were looking at for the other side of the northern side of town?
I haven't heard lately, uh, where they are with that.
The assisted living?
Yes.
Um, I've not heard that there's really any, I've not heard of any more progress.
This 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 spot could, uh, possibly accommodate something like that.
Lot of lot of possibilities with this property.
William, were you going to speak to what Shannon said there a second ago?
Yeah, I was just going to say that, uh, while you can't, while you're not supposed to, uh, enter into a lease that you know is going to be longer than ten years, either the term itself or with the extensions would be over ten years without going through the statutory process of selling it. It's, you know, it sort of have to pretend that it's a sale even though it's not. If you if you have a plan to go over ten years, uh, however, uh, depending on how things play out and so forth, uh, it's not that you can't wind up being with the same operator or or tenant or or concessionaire for more than ten years. You just can't, uh, intentionally go out and try to enter into a lease to lease town property or something that is like a lease, uh, for more than ten years. So I think that's why Shannon was alluded to. Is that my hitting on the right topic?
It it is. I I think the board needed needed to hear that. Uh, if we we go down this road again, under the same circumstance, we're we're we need to take a different approach, probably, William. Is that what you're saying?
Uh.
We've been, we've kind of been creeping forward with this lease of this property and we haven't gone through what you've described formally.
Right, every, I mean, I think the total, I think it's going to add up to nine years, uh, by the twenty, uh, the April of twenty twenty-two. Um, so, um, I mean, the most and nothing really probably would happen i- if you just kept re-upping it. But but certainly to follow the letter of the the, uh, statutes on disposition of public property, um, it would probably be appropriate to do what you're thinking about doing, uh, or at least the option of, at the very least, renewing. I mean, uh, uh, having an RFP for other operators i- if if that's the route the council decides to go. Uh, sounds like the current operator is no longer probably going to be interested. So this would largely be a non non-issue because you'd be starting with with someone else or using the property for another, uh, another, uh, use.
So I think we've got enough in the record so that it's safe for us to say for us to continue with the existing concessionaire, we're bumping up against a a statutory requirement. So really, to be legal by the letter of the law, we need to go through an RFP process. Uh, and we're almost at the end. Uh, by the time this next existing contract runs out, it's really time for us to do a formal RFP and allow other folks to to have a shot at this. So I think we just need to remember that, that it's it's time for us to do an RFP at the end of this contract regardless if we're going to continue with that property being a golf course. So just just it's, I think that's important for us to remember as as we move forward. By law, it's time for us to take this out and and let, and if if the Minnick family wanted to submit a proposal, they certainly could do that. Uh, but it's time for us to do this at the end of the this current contract and, uh, and let other folks have a shot at this.
Okay, are are does anyone, any other commissioners or anyone else who's here have any more, um, information or questions or observations?
Nope.
Then, um, I think there's no real decision to be made except that which we have said that we'll continue with the, um, putting the RFPs out to the appraisers and, uh, working on possibly RFPs that would go to pot- potential golf course managers. And other than that, we'll just continue to monitor it. Dean, thank you so much. That was a lot of work. That's a long draft I read on that contract. Good. But very good. Uh, we'll move on to, um, item E. Oh, yes.
Carol, sorry. Well, uh, one final question. Does this need to go before the, um, uh, does this need to go before Parks and Rec for RFPs for for commercial? The this piece, I don't think it does because we're just basically doing an assessment of our, you know, current, um, assets. Um, I don't think it would need any sort of anything from that board, would it?
I wouldn't think so, but does anyone else have any input on that? I I wouldn't see why it would, we would have to.
I don't think so.
Okay.
They're they're an advisory board. We're we're, you know, Parks and Rec certainly should be, understand what's going on with this, have ideas and all that, but, uh, there's no requirement to go to throw it back to you.
And I I wouldn't think this would be an open discussion we'd want to have right now with Parks and Recs till we got a little closer. Dean, you may, uh, and Patrick have some feelings about that too. I'm not sure we're at that point yet. Uh, for having that entire discussion with an advisory board for everyone else to listen to.
I agree.
Yeah, and and with a concessionaire who sits on that board too.
Right, exactly.
But asset, you know, asset development and planning every few years, you want to take a look at them and and assess them. So, um, I just wanted to kind of ask the question as a matter of preference. So thank you.
Okay, uh, well, if there's no more on that, then we'll move to item E, which is approval of the Withers-Ravanel proposal. And, um, Shannon, I'll defer to you on that.
Sure. So, uh, today we would not formally approve the proposal, but it's really meant for discussion. We would have to have a budget amendment if we wanted to pursue this particular pro- uh, proposal. But this has to do with, uh, the schedule that we were talking about earlier with sewer. The reservoir drain, uh, also called the sewer access valve is in the critical path for us to stay on schedule, uh, for construction for sewer. And so the design and, uh, the the construction funds uh, have to be there in order for us to to, uh, design the reservoir drain uh, and also to construct the reservoir drain. Again, it's also called the sewer access valve. It it is exactly the the same facility, same tool, just with a different brand. Just to kind of bring you up to speed, Laura has applied for a grant for, uh, the reservoir drain design. And we are to hear something, uh, any any day now, uh, for that. We were told we would hear something before, I think it's the first week in November. I'm going to let Laura speak to that just in a second. And then also we are trying to, uh, to make sure that we have resources and we really have them in triplicate relative to funding for construction of that reservoir drain. And 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 you say, well, how are we doing? How are we? How are we having triplicate sources? In the SRF loan, two point five million dollars is earmarked for the reservoir drain. So that's, uh, that's that's there. If we find another source of revenue to build the reservoir drain, that's that's basically two point five million in the SRF loan we can put into sewer. And so, uh, Laura has applied for a grant to cover reservoir drain design. Uh, we're going to be applying for a grant for reservoir drain construction. But the grant for reservoir drain construction is going to be so tight. We're not sure that even if we were to secure that grant that it would hit in time to comply or align with Lobella's, uh, schedule for sewer. So that's why we're looking now at a possible third source. Uh, and that is a loan, a USDA loan. They're wrought with red tape and paperwork and so, uh, it's not something that staff, uh, i- if you're doing it every day, it's not so bad, but if you don't do these every day, you're you're going to be challenged. Uh, so internally, to date, staff has never completed a USDA loan application. Withers-Ravanel, they do this. They're in close contact with USDA. And so they they do this kind of work. So that's what this proposal is for. It's, uh, basically to start a process where we're working with Resor- Withers-Ravanel to submit a loan application to USDA for us to to perform, uh, the construction of the the reservoir drain. Uh, we're hearing fairly decent, we're getting good vibes, uh, regarding the grant for the reservoir drain design. And so I'd like at this time, if Laura, if you could just kind of brief us on the latest uh, with the with that that grant, that would be helpful to us. And then we'll talk about construction law.
Good morning. So yes, um, Shannon, in preparation for this meeting on Monday, I reached out to, um, our contacts at DEQ. They administer the FEMA grant, um, for the high hazard, um, uh, dam and, um, we were told we would hear by eleven one. Um, when I communicated on Monday, um, I was told that we should hear early next week. Um, I think, uh, I had some real encouraging language, um, something to the effect of, we're going to try and help you out, I think is what was actually stated to me. So that was positive and, um, having George Eller come and see the the dam and, uh, I think was very, very helpful and important. That's his second trip to Lake Lure that I know of. So, um, he is, you know, oversees that office, of course, for, he is the dam safety officer, um, for the state. So, um, I was told that I that we would hear early next week. As happens with these, it it seems like you're you're really, they string you along. It seems like that's how it feels. Um, but on a positive note, um, we are also, um, we're working with Schnabel Engineering to develop a proposal. We do not have that proposal yet, but for the cost of the, uh, reservoir drain uh, to actually design the construction of the reservoir drain. And we intend to apply for And we intend to apply for this FEMA grant, which is, it's a whole different category within FEMA. It's called the Building Resilient Infrastructure and Communities, or the BRIC funds. So it, it seems like a perfect fit, um, to be able to, uh, utilize this grant for that. The positive thing that I was alluding to, now, this grant, um, you, your application goes through January, the end of January, 2021. That's the deadline for applying. Um, and it is, uh, a complicated one as well, a complicated grant process. So I have been trying to go through all of these, um, all the information they give you to help you prepare for the grant. So, um, I, I guess that's, that's a summary of where we are. We're waiting. The positive thing I was trying to get to is that in attending some of these courses to prepare you for applying for the grant, um, they have told us that unlike the FEMA high hazard, um, potential dam grant that we have applied for twice now, you do not have to, to await in order to move forward with your design. You can go ahead and begin your work if you have the funding to do that. And you have the understanding that of course there's no guarantee of getting the grant, but, um, we're going to go for it.
Shannon.
Sir.
I, I'll just add, uh, I'm a real, a little reluctant to, to make this comment, but I will tell you that Georgia Eller pulled me to the side yesterday and did make a comment to me that they, he felt very good about being able to help us out. And that there was some additional money that was going to be available, and that he, he's focused on that for us.
That's good.
And he, he made that, he pulled me to decide to say that yesterday.
That is awesome. That's such good news. So today I'm not asking you to approve the, the WR proposal, uh, but I, I, I just want to show that it's there. We're in communication with them, uh, and it's there. Uh, if we need to jump on it. I think, uh, having, um, confirmation of the grant for design is going to be imminent. And once we confirm that, um, we're still on track with the Lobella schedule for sewer. And so, uh, we've got time just to apply for the grant for construction. We've got time to work with WR on the loan. But I will say this, that the USDA, uh, loan process is arduous. It takes a lot of time. And, uh, we need to get moving on that if we expect to, to, uh, have confirmation of that loan, uh, for construction. And that's what this, um, will be for, would be just for the construction of the reservoir drain. So it's there. It's teed up. It's ready. Uh, I think we premature to approve it today, but I think we, we, we are waiting to hear, to get the good news on the design, and then we can move to pull the trigger on, uh, on the loan if, if we, if we need to, if we need to. So it's going to be an option. And I'd like to hear from, from the, from the mayor, from the board as to what you would like for us to do from here, if anything.
So Shannon, a little bit more information. Agree with everything so far. So, um, and Commissioner Kilby talked with George and that, that was all, it, it was terrific. I got the same sense as Commissioner Kilby. Matter of fact, John Nicholson said, he really didn't have any confidence that a USDA loan could be processed in time to meet any of our timelines. So not only is it wrought with red tape, it's high risk. So my fear would be an investment in WR to no avail. And so, um, the better approach, um, going after the brick loan, and Laura, I got a new point of contact for you at DEQ. Now, this is above, uh, George, who's in the dam safety. This is for all of DEQ, the financial quote unquote wizard that John Nicholson told me to, to talk to, just another point of contact. His name is Chris Crew, C R E W. Um, and I have to confirm his email address.
I haven't, I actually reached out to him earlier.
Oh, perfect. Good.
Earlier this week, because I, I think we have to go through, and it's confusing. His email is John Drew, but he knows by Chris.
Yeah.
And we worked with him on our, getting our mitigation plan approved and updated. And so we are linked because of that, and you as town council recently approved that updated plan that North Carolina updated. So I reached out to him, but that's really good to know that I'm getting, you know, to have that other, um, direction from John Nicholson.
Yeah. So, so what happened yesterday was Nicholson is going to come from the other direction, which is his boss.
Yeah, that's good.
Down to, to J Crew. And, uh, and so we'll work it from that end. So here, here's my thought, putting it all together. I think the best approach is to go after a brick, if we can get there, as our third option, uh, Shannon, instead of the USDA. And now we have even a fourth option, right? Which is legislative oversight to be able to tap into ad valorem taxes, to be able, even, even if we were, uh, to use SRF, uh, initially to, to, uh, to fund the valve. Now we have another tool using ad valorem taxes to continue with additional phases. So it, it mitigates tapping into SRF for the sewer in the initial phases, because we have another avenue open to us. So I think I would propose the better approach is to go after brick, as Laura outlined. Keep the USDA on hold right now. Probably won't, uh, lead to anything anyway. And, and have John Metcalf and, um, Steve Metcalf pursue the legislative oversight, I think is our best, best approach right now.
Well, that's, that, that sounds good if, 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 if council agrees with that. That's, that's, I think that's, that's a winner.
Any other comments from, from commissioners?
I'm good. No, thank you.
Okay. Well, then I think that seems to be, um, affirmation that everyone agrees with what you're saying, David. So. Well, it's good to know though, right? So I think we leave that right, right where we are, and we all, uh, share the same position there, and we'll cross our fingers for next week, Laura. And once again, thank you for all the work you do on for us. Not, not something you can count on and lots of hours of work and hair pulling, uh, but we've got to hear about that, um, next week. And I know you'll let us know as soon as we get it. Um, we'll move on then to F, and this may be sort of a moot point here. We've already discussed it pretty much under C, but approval of task six, excuse me, of the sewer system project proposal. And that seems to have already come up. The timing of that seems to have already come up in our, in our previous conversations. Is there anything anyone else would like to add to that point?
No, ma'am. I think we're, staff's clear.
Okay. Well, then, um, I think, uh, I think we've already discussed that too. If there's nothing, if there, that is the last item on our agenda. If there's nothing else that anyone wants to discuss or remarks.
Just, just a comment, Madam Mayor. The, the meeting that, uh, was, uh, held yesterday at the dam with, with DEQ, I got a call literally at the end of last week, uh, from Jonathan Pittman. And he said, Shannon, uh, he said, uh, DEQ's coming to look at the project in, uh, Asheville, the reservoir drain. And we'd like for them to, to come to Lake Lure. So if you have any questions, call Mark Landis. Of course I had questions. Absolutely shocked and surprised. I called Mark Landis and said, Mark, what's, what's going on? Just tell me what, what's at play here? He said, well, the deputy chief, uh, is coming with everyone from him all the way down into DEQ through dam safety. And it probably would behoove us to, to have some folks there that, that could meet him. I said, okay, well, who, who should be there? And so he, I, I didn't want to say this publicly. He specifically named Commissioner Kilby and Commissioner Diorio. He said, I think these are two that, based on the comments at community forum, probably should, should be there. And so, uh, we, we sent a text, said, hey, guys, we got a special request from Schnabel for you guys to be there and, and, and to meet these guys. I was pinned down with meetings, uh, and, and, and just couldn't be there. I'd like to have been there, but I couldn't be there. So I just, I want to thank those two commissioners for jumping in there and, uh, and also Dean Lindsay and giving these guys a great tour, because it absolutely, I think, was critical and successful to, to what we're doing.
Well, we, we appreciate it all. And we know you represented this very well. So thank you very much for your time, as always. If there is nothing else, do I hear for a, uh, motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
I, I.
Then we stand adjourned. Thank you all.